Communications Supervisor Tracy Holland, who will be quarterbacking that. Go ahead, Counselor Foddy.
Thank you, your worship. Can you yourself elaborate? You sat in with them, but a week ago, ten days ago.
Yes.
What's their input on this?
They were all very much in favor of this and and the biggest concern that the group had was the accountability piece. If it's not an official committee of council, how do we know that things are going to continue to move forward? And but we committed to them at that time. The working group would still have a staff person assigned to it. The only difference is is that there's not like there's minutes that are taken, but not clerk type minutes. And there's not reports back to council, but if there's something that the committee identifies as a need within the community, then they can come back. It also means that they have a liaison to work with to bring anything forward out of budget timeframe. And Tracy has proven extremely good at sort of building those relationships quickly. She's only been with us. Yeah, it's within a year. So maybe I'll ask the director to speak to that.
Through your worship. Yeah, sorry. So Tracy's only been with us since January sometimes, so not very long. But I guess the so when actually like, I think it was Tracy's first or second day. Her and Dave and I went to one of the peer group meetings, like their individual meetings. And then Tracy and I have tried to attend one of each of their meetings. So the message that we kind of received from each of the groups was just that a lot of times they had a hard time getting enough people out to the peer committee meetings. And so they didn't have quorum. So then they couldn't actually make a decision to move any of the business forward because because of the structure. So that's why we're thinking the working group might work better. So that we can, at least if it's a smaller group of people, we can still advance different topics and discussion around things. And then always happy just for staff to kind of bring that back through for council's consideration.
Does that answer your question? Perfect. Any further comments or questions in regards to this? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. Okay, next item is SR dash zero nine eight dash twenty three, letter of support for Landstone Telephone Broadband Funding. And the motion comes forward from Counselor Maybe and seconded by Counselor Foddy that the committee, the whole recommends that council approve the issuance of a letter of support in respect to the Landstone Telephone Company's application for funding from the Canadian Radio, Television and Telecommunications Commission Broadband Fund to expand broadband services within the township. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead, Counselor Lackey, and then Counselor Foddy.
Thank you, worship. And through you, I'll be voting in favor of this. Obviously, it's a just wanted to add a personal note to it. I recently have just switched everything in my house over to to the fiber optic, including television, internet. It's a great system. They were very, I watched them down on the on the Parkway doing their expansion with the with the new wire. I look forward to more and more people getting it as this will help. And as well, I think there was an announcement from Explorer, which was previous Explorer Net. Is that correct?
It's Explorer Net.
Explorer Net?
Explorer. Just Explorer, sorry.
Actually, yeah, Explorer. And that is basically gonna cover pretty well all of the areas that have not been touched yet with with fiber optics. So overall, I think things look good for Ontario right now.
Thank you, Counselor Foddy.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with Counselor Lackey. Any progress is just that. And if we can support a local company with local employees, that's 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 even more of a reason to support this. And I'm glad to hear that somebody firsthand is seeing the results and reaping the benefits of this. And we'll see where we go from here. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My my one thing was I was wondering about Lynnhurst. Why they aren't in their plan as as one of the questions? Because they've got every other borough except for Lynnhurst for some reason.
That would be a question for them directly, unfortunately. But I would say that there was an email that was distributed this morning, I believe. And it was unfortunately, it missed the deadline for this particular meeting. However, the province has released a map showing all the funded projects, the projects that have been completed to date, what is pending and for fiber optic connection. So it's the first time since the whole reverse auction debacle, if you will. I call it that because it's been very poorly communicated within amongst even the MPPs. It's the first time that we've gotten a glimpse as to where funding has landed, where contracts have been cured, and where things are actually happening. Is it 100% clear who's where what? No. But it is an indication of that there's some movement in different spots. So I would encourage you to go to the link in that email that was sent to you this morning. And we will be, we can share that with the public as well. If they want to go on and look, it's a public website and look at their road, their borough, wherever they have, wherever they are, so they can see whether they will be serviced in the near future. Okay. Any further comments or questions? I think we're all trying to be optimists here, but I think that our frustration is definitely shown over the years. At the end of the day, this is asking for a letter of support. So if they're going after funding that will further serve residents of this municipality, where are we to stand in the way? I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And we're carried. Okay, next item is under information items. Cataract Way Source Protection Committee Invitation for Expression of Interest Municipal Representatives Moved by Counselor Foddy, Seconded by Counselor Jameson, That the information be received from the Cataract Way Source Protection Committee or that Counselor Blank is interested and will submit required information to the Cataract Way Source Protection Committee for their consideration. So there's two options in this motion. So we'll have some general discussion before we choose which option it will be. At the end of the day, our recently departed deputy mayor was a member of this committee along with Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority. And we have an opportunity to replace him at that committee. Or we can also go to the he wasn't, oh, sorry, I thought he also, my apologies. It was Cataract Way Conservation Authority that was, he was a member of. So we have an opportunity to have somebody on this particular committee if somebody so desires, or we can receive it for our information and go out to the public. So it is up to this council to go one way or the other. Is there any counselors that are interested in sitting on this committee? I see none that have popped up, so I will assume that we'll go with the first option, which is that the information be received from the Cataract Way Source Protection Committee, unless I hear otherwise. I hear not otherwise. So I will call the question. The motion reads that the information be received from the Cataract Way Source Protection Committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carried. Next item is unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Go ahead, Counselor Jameson.
Just want to bring your attention to the fact that we're still waiting for a flashing light change up in Sweets Corners Road School. We were told it was going to be in last week, I believe it was last week. And then at the very last minute, there was nothing. And then I got a note saying that it was because they hadn't done the, you know, dig before you dig or call before you dig. What they call that the locates. So I, you know, it's it's a it's a minor issue in in the great meaning of life, but it is great irritant for people that live up and constantly use the road.
Well, speaking from experience of picking garbage along roadside with the children who are there, it is staggering to me, even with a gaggle of children standing on the side of the road with markers. We all had vests on, picking up garbage, the neglect even when it is school hours. But I guess that is a personal responsibility. Some of us take more seriously than others. But your point is duly noted and Director of Operations and I will follow up with the county to find out if they actually have a timeline. Thank you. Unfinished business. Any other unfinished business? There is something coming up for you here shortly. So other business, CN Rail update. I will actually postpone that. I have, we have a bit of an update through Good Roads and it'll be part of that. So both Counselor Lackey and Counselor Foddy, along with myself and our Director of Operations, attended the Ontario Good Roads Association Conference held in Toronto a week or so ago. And as always, these conferences are as much about understanding what the landscape is regarding funding as it is to making connections with contractors, suppliers, and better understanding the technical stuff that goes on with roads, bridges, culverts, and everything in between. So as I mentioned before, there was a fireside chat with Premier Ford, who told us that there would be about $186 billion invested into roads and other infrastructure over the next five years. That is a lot of money. However, if the federal government would come to the playing field and step up like they did in the previous term of government, we could get a lot more done. However, I'm not sure what the financial situation is up on Parham Hill. From the outsider looking in, I it's very difficult even for myself to understand. However, the hope is is that they will come to the table with a matching program of some sort. And the province is hoping to roll that out soon. Minister Maruni had a session. Counselor Lackey, did you want to?
Thank you, your worship. Yes. Minister Maruni only spoke for approximately 15 minutes, but the nuts and bolts of it all was that she, they have, the province has money committed to more road construction, improvements, new roads leading east, which would indicate where the three lane ends, what Port Hope, Coburg area, further to Quebec border, and there seems to be a large focus on roads to the north as well. So their money is committed there. As I posted on Facebook, it looks like this will be a year of of much construction if you're doing any kind of vacationing. And as well, the presentations that were given are on the OJRA website. It can still be viewed.
So the group of us also had the opportunity to meet with the minister for breakfast and talk about some specific issues here within our own municipality. And we appreciated that opportunity. Our Director of Operations got to be a technical with him. I'll let him talk about a couple of things and then I'll, or maybe it's Terry. Sorry. Go ahead, Terry.
Thank you, your worship. No, it was, it was very nice to the minister, our own MVP, to take the time out to meet with us, which he did graciously. And and the nice part was he wasn't looking at his watch while meeting with us. So that was always comforting. Some of the takeaways we had, the Director of Operations, I'll I'll pass this portion back to him. But the timing couldn't have been better when the Director of Operations got the J L Richards report the afternoon before our meeting. So that that was just awesome. But I know when we asked our MVP about funding for such things as our new fire hall, because we're getting into a situation now or assume be making decisions as to how that's going to go forward. He was receptive and told us to keep him abreast of what our movements are and go from there. As so, I mean, there was no stone wall put up, which is always comforting. I'll I'll let the Director of Operations did a great job that day of representing us as a whole. And I'll let Dave do that.
Yeah, no, I think in terms of the fire hall, I was very optimistic that something is coming down the pipes. So that's great, because the timing couldn't be any better for us right now. Staring at at a brand new fire hall here in the next, I'm hoping within the next six months to be tendering that one. And then the the water wastewater, like Counselor Foddy said, we just happened to receive the report right at the right time when we had our meeting. And he was well aware, you know, being from here of of some of our concerns with the water and the wastewater. And, you know, committed that the challenge is not unique to other municipalities, like I said before, and and that they were hopeful that something would be coming our way or coming down from Ontario for for such issues.
So a couple of other things in regards to CN. Obviously, our main CN issue here, I was able to meet up with Mr. Salvatore, who is the government relations individual who is working with our United Counties of Leeds and Grenville in regards to the Highway 32 debacle, if you will. And they have already been in in touch with claims. There is a claims department through CN. However, the claim cannot be completed until the roadwork is completed. And we know the final number for the cost associated with that. I made Mr. Salvatore very aware of the fact that we have an upset individual, more than one, whose property has been drastically affected by this. And he said that he had been speaking with the contact at the county in regards to this very thing. But I made it abundantly clear to Mr. Salvatore that once is a mistake, second time was maybe not so much. There was a bit of back and forth. I did not back down for the record. I'm just extremely disappointed that that there's a number, that there was contractors on site and there was finger pointing. Well, you know, they weren't supposed to take it out and all this kind of stuff. So there's a lot of hearsay going on. However, it doesn't negate the fact that the man has three feet of material on his lawn and has had potential property damage. So the county will be tasked with continuing to pursue that claim against CN. However, our good Director of Operations went to the CN breakout session, which is separate from the trade show, obviously. And to say that people are not happy with CN might be an understatement.
Yes, thank you. During the session, I heard from the County of South Dundas and Glengarry, the City of Kingston and Central Frontenac. The frustration was really came across with South Dundas and Glengarry in terms of planning and, you know, just having a sense of of when they intend to do the work that they do. Six months notice is not sufficient in August when budgets are already approved. It that rang through with Central Frontenac in the City of Kingston as well, who received $200,000 bills each for work done to the railway within within a year. You know, $200,000 to the City of Kingston really isn't that big of a deal. But when you look at somebody like Central Frontenac, you know, they're they're similar to us in size. I think there's a lot less population. So that $200,000 was was a bit of a shot. So I don't, I don't think that CN, when they held the session, expect to get as battered as they did. But everybody got up and rang or sang the same song that they need to do a better job of planning, not only in terms of of their operations, similar to to County Road 32, but also for their capital investments. I know myself, I've had some challenges making contact with with CN for one reason or another. And it seems like we're not alone. When we had our our meeting with Minister Clarke, I made sure to to point that out to him as well. And he said that he would push that up the chain. So we weren't, we weren't alone in providing that information to him either. So it's good to know that that other people feel the same way, you know, it's not good. But at least we're, we're not the only ones. We're not the squeaky wheel.
I already spoke about the Broadman map that's now available. So we will be publishing that on the going forward. We'll make some connections through our social media and our website for the public consumption. And then you have the MMS five-year update.
Yeah. So when I, when we first arrived at Good Roads, there was an MMS update session. I had been contacted previously by the by the President of OJRA and invited to sit in on the task force for this update. So the the MMS, that's our minimum maintenance standards. That's when we have to fill potholes. That's when we have to plow roads. And and it's every five years they have to do an update. So this is, you know, sitting in on on the session as as we progress forward and and update the the five-year plan. So that's that's good. I'm looking forward to that. Some topics of discussion in the in the session revolved around a lot of municipalities that close their sidewalks in the winter. I don't think that would be well received here personally. But there are some municipalities that do that. They're looking at the maintenance of the sidewalks beyond the sidewalk, looking more at a right of way, which does create some issues for municipalities. Consistency of of the level of service from one municipality to another. So it was a really good session to to take in. And, you know, as things progress, I'm happy to to share that information with council as well.
I think the last thing is the municipal working group?
Yeah. So thank you. As we were meeting with with the group and I got to discussion with with one of the managers from the township of Loyalist. And we found that we're not very different. You know, everybody has has waste management issues. We have our blue box transition in 2025 in Eastern Ontario. Everybody's going through it. Asset management requirements moving forward for all of our assets and levels of service. You know, the the list goes on and on of of these challenges that we have. I'm, we're looking internally at at updating our winter control plan, because there hasn't been one received here. So I guess creating the first one. And so I had this conversation with Loyalist and just, you know, we started sharing some information about how we do what we do. And I suggested maybe we need to to make this a formal thing where where we have these discussions with with the lower tier municipalities. So he he thought it was a great idea. And after our conversation, he reached out to to a colleague that we know at the City of Belleville, who just thought this was fantastic. Let's do it. Let's do it tomorrow kind of thing. So I reached out to to South Frontenac as well, where I'd come from, and had a chat with the the director there. And the four of us, so it's could be ourselves, it'd be Loyalist, which is in Lennox and Addington. It'd be South Frontenac, which is in Frontenac County, and City Belleville, which is in Hastings. Basically covers the District Date Association that we're all a part of with the the lower tier municipalities. So the idea is that we'll get together, we'll have some topics that we we discuss, like asset management, like waste management, all those kinds of things. And then we'll push it through to the the district date group for all the the remaining lower tier municipalities to absorb and come up with ideas and and those types of things. We're also members of another group. It's called Cost East. So it's the county only in single tier. We're not a single tier. We're not a county, but I'm able to sit in on that one, as are the other members that are going to be part of this group. So the idea is that we can push it up to the county level as well. And when they're having their conversations around Eastern Ontario, that those thoughts can be shared at a higher level, and then some of the ideas can be pushed back down again and dispersed out. So we have our first meeting set for June, and we're going to meet quarterly. And actually, we are hosting the first meeting here. So that's the formal kickoff.
Formal kickoff. And just as an addition to that update, I believe your other working group with other affected bodies locally, so OPP, all of that sort of stuff, that you're also scheduling a meeting for that?
Correct. We will be hosting that meeting in the next couple of weeks with the county and the MTO and OPP front of Young. And yeah, I think that pretty much covers everybody in fire.
That speaks to Mr. Maybe's question is that we're going to get an update. Because there was a couple of other things that we, when we met with the minister that have not been done. The, we did accomplish the snowmobile broom trail on the Parkway, which is one of many of four things I think we met about. So we'll be looking for updates on the other stuff. So Counselor Lackey, you had a question?
Thank you, worship. While we have the director there, I think this should have probably been an unfinished business. But since we're, well, it's to do with, again, it's to do with CN. I know recently in talking to our director that it came to this council about the the train whistles. And, you know, having them blow their horn. And I believe the director had indicated that the City of Kingston actually went one step beyond ours and went for the study. And I just wondered if publicly we could hear the results.
Yes, thank you, through your worship. I did have a conversation at Good Roads with the City of Kingston. They had progressed to the next steps. Part of the requirements was for barrier fencing of the affected area to provide a protected zone for CN Rail. And the cost that they were looking at for the zone that they had considered was $2 million, between $2 and $5 million of investment required for for removing the or the whistle cessation is is what it's called. So at that point, they they backed away from it. City of Markham did go through the entire process, and they were the only ones that CN had indicated had gone through that entire process. So if everybody that has looked at it, I know I've been contacted by Prescott as to how far we've we've gone so far. It doesn't sound like like anybody's progressing with this, unfortunately, because the expectations are far too high.
Go ahead, Counselor Foddy.
Like your worship through you. With regards to the CN and Sun Highway 32, can we get a message to county to have some contact or liaison with the affected property owners? From what I understand, they've heard nothing. The one property owner calls me frequently, which is great. I don't mind that at all. They've incurred $7,000, an excess of $7,000 out of pocket just to reclaim some of their property, knowing that nothing was going to happen fast. I think there just needs to be some communication between the county. This news tonight that there is a claim and everything needs to be restored before it puts forward, I think that would be music to their ears. They are documenting every expense and every man hour put into it and such, which is great. But I think if they heard that from a higher authority than myself, they'd appreciate it.
Fair enough. Thank you. Go ahead.
One more. I'll just jump on this train, pun intended. County Road 34, I'm not sure if it's been communicated out from the county, but they are looking at updating the crossing on County Road 34 this year.
So that's the only crossing within the township that was not repaired last year?
Correct.
Which is Eden Grove. Iscocks, Eden Grove. It starts and it stops. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to that point, that the the property has been cleaned up by the resident, because he's very gifted with the equipment and it was close by. So he has made amends to his property, moved all the soil and sand off, removed some trees and got the ditch working that actually transverses the two properties down to the road edge. So he's made great gains of what it looks like. So the county should or CN do need to reimburse for all his hours.
Fair enough. Any other other business? Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Oh, sorry. This Saturday at 2 o'clock in Towne, Ganonak, we as town crier, I will be proclaiming the coronation of the new king. So there will be a presentation and an event there. Perhaps next week I can actually do that proclamation here, not necessarily in my uniform, but at least to present it to council as a item, since we are getting a new monarch. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Foddy.
Like your worship, and I will gladly join Counselor Maybe at 4:00 AM on Saturday morning to watch that event in England. If you wish, I'll bring the coffee. I just want to give a the hats off to all the youth in our area. And I mean, right from, I don't know if it includes kindergarten, but we'll say from the younger grades right up to the high schools. We got some youth doing some amazing things in all levels of sport, at all levels, being at just a local track and field meets, but some of them are taking it abroad and such to New York City and and Toronto. And, you know, that's that's great. I mean, if our youth are going out there and spreading who they are to a broader spectrum, that that can't help but bode well here. And hats off to the parents that that support that and put in the hundreds of hours that 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 requires. You, your worship, would know all about that. Thank you.
I'm just thinking of the welts on my 17-year-old's arm from playing rugby on turf. It is a tough sport and for the tough. Any other other business? Seeing none, we'll move on to notices of motion. Any notices of motion? Go ahead, Counselor Lackey.
Thank you. I have two, but I'm reluctant to bring out my second one. So I'll just start with the first one. Basically, in the interest of staff time and workload and in lieu of council, what we've had to deal with with civil disputes, I would like to bring forth a motion to direct staff to bring forward a report to amend the zoning bylaw. To amend the zoning bylaw for marine facilities to include rooftop amenities as a permitted use. As well as eliminate lot line projection, um, area and perimeter.
Okay, our planner is currently on vacation, but I'm sure that between our assistant planner Uh, Lindsay and the clerk, we can get a motion drafted that can come forward.
Thank you, that will bring us in line with other municipalities and save a lot of this stuff from coming to council that doesn't have to.
Thank you. And you said you're gonna hold off on the second one? Okay. Any other notices of motion? Seeing none, I'll go forward with the mayor's update, so just a, a real big thank you, I know this weekend was Awful weather-wise uh, for the pitch-in event, however, I know there was a number of individuals and groups, people who were out Picking up garbage, and I know I say this every year, but it just floors me the amount of garbage that is on the roadside. In one small area, which had already been picked uh, by a local individual, a group of school kids went out And we still got five bags of garbage and a couple of spare tires and all this other kind of crazy stuff, and that was out Uh, near Sweets Corners. Uh, I know there was cleanup that happened here at Ties, and I know a, a number of uh, local groups get together, Clean the parkway, that sort of thing. Uh, there usually is a river cleanup when it gets a little bit warmer, people go out in the kayaks and they Uh, try to clean up some shoreline stuff, so if you are interested in that, I would recommend that you Get ahold of the Thousand Islands Association TIA, um, they usually quarterback that here in the near future. Uh, so thank you to every single person who chipped in their time, whether it's community groups or individuals and the teachers who help Um, strengthen this in the children at an early age. So visit our community events calendar on our website for upcoming events, including a greenhouse car rally, Nature print mug workshop and more, so if you're a business or an association that has an event coming up, please reach out To our communication supervisor Tracy Holland, uh, or McKenna Maudler, who works in that department. And we will ensure your information gets pushed out either via our social media, website, or our newsletter, depending on the time. Speaking to King Charles III's coronation, it will take place on uh, May the sixth, on Saturday. The coronation will reflect the monarch's role today and look towards the future while being rooted in longstanding traditions and pageantry. Um, I know that not everybody is a um, monarchy supporter. However, we do swear allegiance to the queen or the king in, in this particular case. Um, and uh, the, it will be very interesting to see how the world receives this and how we move forward from here. The outdoor courts in Lansdowne and Seale's Bay are now open, please visit our website to book a set time. And that's important if you wanna ensure the courts are yours, that we have them booked in advance. Um, and if you're looking to upgrade your private lane, the application deadline for eligible road associations is June the second. So that's for any capital work. Um, as an additional note, uh, the county strategic planning process um, has decided, The county has decided to embark on a strategic planning process, so we haven't had one for quite some time. Um, and we've uh, engaged the same group that we worked with here in the township, which I think was a very positive thing. Uh, Strategy Corp um, is going to be working with us on May the fifth. Also Touch Truck is happening here in the township, and I believe it's May twenty-fifth. Here at the municipal building and will begin at three PM, I believe, two PM, sorry. Had it wrong here. So that is uh, extremely important to know, if you know anybody who has little people or Um, anybody who um, would like to come and see our big trucks and we have police, fire, ambulance And here is usually as well. Um, but it was a great success, we will have another charity barbecue, will be music And uh, and our staff will be showcasing some of our equipment and to let the kids get in and out and And that is, so May twenty-fifth, it's a Wednesday or Thursday, Thursday, it's a Thursday. And also just a reminder that May tenth, uh, interviews for Ward Two councillor will be coming to the table here And will be a special meeting, and then once the interviews are concluded on the tenth, we'll make a decision and the appointment will be happening On May the eighteenth, and the meeting on May the tenth is a six PM meeting, just to let everybody know. Go ahead councillor Fody.
Like your worship furthermore, applications are still open till three PM this coming Friday, right?
Thank you, so applications close at three PM on Friday, May the fifth. Four thirty, oh, sorry. Um, so four thirty on the fifth, which is this Friday. Anything I've missed, gentlemen? I see nothing, so we'll move forward with adjournments. Motion comes forward from councillor Jameson, seconded by councillor Maybe, that the committee, the whole adjourn, all those in favor? All those opposed?